I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. We are going to start with exemplary people and our principal of Monroe Elementary School, Adeb Kavachi, will lead us in this portion of the meeting. And we will have herself and Sean Sarafino, teacher at Monroe, and John, you and I will be there too.
You can be over there so that they can see you on camera and we will have pictures taken through. Good evening, everybody. Since Sean has taught at Monroe Elementary School, he has been at every grade level with two and five. We hired him during declining enrollment in the elementary schools and it was also during very tumultuous budget time, so he kept on getting bumped to the open position at Monroe. In retrospect, yeah, he didn't think it was so funny at the time, but this provided him with many experiences that I think have been, really helped him provide a great base for him at our school. About five years ago, he decided to pursue his six-year certificate in science leadership and education at Sacred Heart. In the elementary school, we really don't have any time to teach just to one thing in isolation, so Sean's interdisciplinary approach in the classroom is apparent throughout the day as he incorporates science into reading, writing, and math. Reading informational books and responding to questions about rock cycles, writing persuasive essays about which animals adapt best for life in desert, or calculating the difference in decomposition times between banana peels and newspapers are examples how science is infused within the lessons of the day. Sean is also our technology integrator at Monroe. He helps the teachers work technology into their lessons. He is a valued member of our leadership team, helping to determine our school goals and continually reviewing our data to monitor how our school is doing and how the individual students are doing. At Monroe, we are very proud of our successes at our school and of our students, but we recognize that our successes are due to the people in our school. Tonight, it's with honor and pride that we recognize Sean Sarafino as the recipient of Connecticut's Excellence in Elementary School Science Teaching Award.
Did you get a picture, John?
I got one.
Nope, that's good. Thank you very much and congratulations on having a child who has had Sean Sarafino as a teacher. First, when he was in first grade at the time, we know what a sensational teacher that he is, so congratulations, well deserved. And you guys can take off, you don't have to sit through the meeting. All right, reporter, the chairman is next. The only thing I really have is, hey, our budget passed on the first vote. Yay! So we have an approved budget and we can move forward with all our planning and I'm sure Gabby is very happy to roll up the budget numbers and move forward with our July 1st and not have to keep waiting to see what's going to happen and everything, so that's really good. So we appreciate that everybody who did come out and vote, all the citizens of Monroe, and voted yes. We are very appreciative of that and we are very happy to have that approved budget to go forward. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stevens. I have a motion by Mr. Gutman, a second by Mr. Stevens to approve the consent agenda. Do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. First up is our Massey School representatives.
Hello, everyone. Last week, we had students from Massey travel to China, Spain, and Portugal, and Germany, and I have a lot of friends who went on these trips and every single person who went raved about it and said they loved each trip they went on. Also, this Thursday at seven, there's the music talent show at the Massey auditorium. And also, on April 30th, the students at Massey will be offered an ACT Aspire test, which is like a practice test to help them prepare for the ACT.
Before break, there was a hang-up-and-drive assembly for juniors, which is important because it's about texting and driving, which is a big new issue with a lot of young drivers in that we see that distracted driving is causing a lot of issues, so they got to hear about different people's stories and really like the dangers that causes. So I think that was an important thing that we experienced before and that for the juniors who are becoming new drivers. There's a community college technical fair happening on Thursday in the library, and then we're also going to have calculus and musicals coming over on Monday, the 25th, which is really cool. It's a traveling group, a performance, and a bunch of different schools are actually coming over here to Massey because we're the only place in Connecticut that they're stopping. So that's really nice for all the calculus students to help us right before AP tests, which are going to be happening in two weeks. And then we also have a blood drive on the 29th, Friday. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. We will move on to our report of our Cooperative Educational Services by Carlos Rinaldo, who thank you very much for taking over that liaison position for us.
Happy to do it, happy to do it. It went great, it was my first meeting, received the welcome packet, and then also, obviously, they welcomed me at the meeting and we're happy that we were represented there. A lot of reporting, a lot of updates. I think some key updates, though, that I do want to share is that they did meet with the Education Commissioner this past month, and she reviewed some anticipated key issues for the State Department of Education. I'm sure we've seen a lot of these through our emails, what's going on in the state. But there are focusing on some key things coming from the State Department, which is based on strategic planning, which is more related to MTR, equity, cultural competency, instruction, reading, exclusionary discipline reduction, and she also clearly signaled that we should expect a reduction in the state funding for magnet school tuition. So magnet school tuition will be, and I think we've seen emails that have shown that, and regrettably, any reduction would have to be made up by the sending districts. So that's one concern. And there are limited spaces right now at 626, there aren't too many in the magnet. They did have, their lottery did come to an end, and they, but all of those that reported really, again, signifying to the fact that with cuts coming down, we're going to have limited and we're going to have to eat up some of the cost of what it would cost to send a child to any of those schools. One of the other things that was mentioned is that there is a, they're dealing with somewhat of a crisis in the sense that in our region, in our county, especially in the inner cities, there's a lack of bilingual teachers, teachers that can instruct also in Spanish and for those that are coming, that are migrating to our county region, but also statewide. And so they're really working closely with pathways to teaching, the alternative route to certification, in trying to get more people interested, especially those that are bilingual, into service students that are coming in. So those were some key issues. The other thing is that there are two more meetings, so May and June. We won't meet in July or August. And there are some invitations. One is, there's a fundraiser, Eighth Annual CES Foundation Signature Fundraiser Event. It's for the Regional Center for the Arts. So I'll pass this around if anyone is interested. I could always get you a copy. And then there's also some professional development for any board member that would like to attend, a Cooperative Educational Services, and it's building trauma-sensitive learning environments for all students, and it's going to be put on by Peter Hall. He's an educator, author. So I'll pass this around as well, anybody interested in attending any of these. But I think that's pretty much, it was my first meeting, a lot to retain, a lot of meeting and greeting, and I think so. It's great.
How many do we, do you know, John, offhand, how many kids we have at 626? I know we did a report recently.
I think we have eight.
I was going to say six to seven.
Yeah.
So not that many.
Not that many in 626.
All right. Great, perfect. Anybody else have any committee reports before we move on? Nope? All right, we will move on to public participation. If anybody would like to speak, if you come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and hearing none, we will move on. We will move on to the report of the superintendent, and we will, we have our assistant superintendent, John, it's used to here tonight, this Jim, took off a couple of days for the spring break, and will return in a day or two, and John is filling in for everything.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Gabby's going to review the fund statement, so maybe you can take us through that.
Right. So as I mentioned in the business update, we're trending pretty positively, not pretty positively, but positively for, through March. Today, we actually received our prescription rebate check, which if you recall, we did in contract negotiations, we instituted a prescription, not a prescription plan, but basically a prescription HSA. So we received a rebate today of $172,000 from Cigna. We budgeted a little less than that, so that was kind of a nice surprise in the mail when I got back from break. Turfield, we went to planning and zoning back on April 7th. The public hearing on the text amendment to increase the lighting height was closed. They did not vote on that. They're planning on voting on that, I believe, this coming Thursday. Inland-Wetland met last Wednesday. They deferred to vote until their next meeting because their chairperson was not there. The thought is, is that we will have all the approvals in, from P&amp;Z and Inland-Wetland by, I believe it's May 5th or so, that first meeting. And at the same time, Mylone and McBroom is working on the RFP, which we plan on putting out. We don't have to wait for approvals to put out an RFP. We do have to wait for approvals and approvals from council, town council, to actually enter into a contract, but we can put the RFP out. Obviously, if something went awry, we would have to pull the RFP. So that's where we stand on that. We have a meeting tomorrow, a walkthrough on the removal of the Stepney oil tank. If you recall, that project was never in the budget, but it is being bonded, of course, it's in the capital improvement plan. And other than that, we're continuing to monitor our costs. We're heading into the last, I think it's 41 days of school now, as my daughter has informed me.
It is.
It is. The kids are counting way better than the adults are. So we're planning on closing purchase orders off and for the remainder of the year in about a week, and kind of tidying up the books and wrapping everything up with a nice big bow, hopefully. And then we'll chug into July 1st, because as Donna, as Chairman Lane mentioned, we have a budget that was passed, which makes it a lot easier for the finance department and also for just administrators in terms of purchasing and planning, which just makes it a lot better, a lot quicker.
Which brings us to the second part, which is the budget update. As everybody knows, that 1.55% made us move some things around. So Gabby's right in the final stages of that, of making the adjustments, so that we'll, when she rolls over the budget, everything will be in the appropriate place. So my next meeting, she'll have something to share with you about where all the funds are and where all the money is for the 1.55%. Again, we're happy that it passed. It helps so many things. We can start hiring some of the positions that, you know, vacated because of retirements. And we always like to wait because we never know what's going to happen with the budget, and sometimes that puts us at a disadvantage. But now we're able to really start doing hiring, and we got all our application, all our positions out there, they've all been posted, and the principals are starting to interview now. So we're pretty happy we are with that now, and it's the first time in a long time we're able to do that. Ally talked a little bit about the travel, and we did have those three trips to China, Portugal, and Spain, and Germany. The good part about this, because of technology, at least the Portugal and Spain and Germany were able to have closed Facebook pages, so Jim and I were able to see every step of the way where the kids were. And, you know, the Bisherry and Miss Home and really kept us up to date through the whole time, so we really appreciated that. And I know that at some point, we might ask them to come back, come to the board to share what they've done and what the kids saw at the trips. But all indications, they're very positive. The China trip, some of the pictures that I saw were just unbelievable, so I'm glad everybody's home safe. And I don't know if everybody knows, but there was a meeting the week before the trip's left because of the concern about travel and the travel bans and things, and so we met in this library. Probably 95% of the parents who were going were here. The trip supervisors were able to talk a little bit about it, but people were nervous, and there were some people who chose not to go because of the trip. So that's the trip. Update about insurance, we did get our final costs in for insurance. Our insurance rates are going to go up 5% this year. Now, remember, last year they went up, nope, they went up 0%. So this year, they're going up 5%, which we still think isn't very bad, because there are some districts in our area that are going double digits. So we're still able to keep control of the costs, even when, you know, they originally thought it was going to be a lot higher, and then we have trended so well in that. So our costs are going to go up 5%. We're in the process of doing open enrollment, that's going to happen the beginning of May, so we think we'll move forward with that. I think that's it.
That's it. Great, thank you. Any questions for John before we move on?
How's the kindergarten enrollment looking?
It's the same. We have to add that one. They're up to 69 in Stepney, so we had to add that one section. But other than that, the other grades are good. I think the way we did kindergarten orientation this year, instead of having one night where people came to register, we had an open, kind of fluid registration, so people have been registering all year. So we're pretty good with that. Now, we do expect to have a few more in the summer, as we always do, but our numbers are holding strong. We were surprised with that, the surge in the Stepney numbers. But, you know, you guys took care of that at the last meeting, so we're able to do that.
Great. Anybody else? All right, we will move on. We will move on to our Board of Education Professional Development by Mr. Joe Cobza, who is going to talk to us about capstone this evening.
Hi, everybody. Just want to give you guys a little bit of an update, and I talked to Ally and Admit this afternoon, and I told them, jump in wherever you feel appropriate, because these guys are both, these guys are both experts in capstone, and they did their presentations early. You know, the biggest thing I can say is, we've come a long way with the capstone project. From the first night, I was happy that we were not selling tomatoes the night that we introduced the capstone the first time, because I think I would have been wearing them all. From that first night when we introduced it, the parents were, you know, very skeptical of it. I think by the end of that first year, though, the parents, you know, the parents came a long way in terms of realizing what a great opportunity this was for kids to kind of explore an area of interest, a possible career or something like that, that they would like. So it's come a long way, and it's really overwhelmingly being supported by the parents. The kids have bought way into it. It's leading to some great opportunities, you know, share some of that stuff with you guys. When I start, when I talk to the kids about capstone, I always ask them, when we launch it to the juniors in March, and we do that intentionally, because we give these kids an opportunity to work on it over the summer, like Ally and Admit did, and present early in the school year, so they're not doing it while they're, you know, trying to do their college applications and all that other stuff. But when I launch the capstone project to the kids, I always ask them, I say, well, what's a capstone? And a lot of them tell me, well, it's a project, and you got to do a presentation, you got to do all this. And I try to tell them, no, a capstone is, you know, in masonry terms, a capstone is kind of this middle stone that holds an arch, and it kind of, you know, holds everything together. And in a lot of ways, that's what I want you guys to think of the, of your capstone projects here, in terms of your experience with the Monroe Public Schools from kindergarten to 12th grade. It's an opportunity for you to kind of put everything together in the capstone experience, where they go out and they, you know, investigate a topic or an area of interest in great detail, follow a mentor, and do a whole bunch of fieldwork experience. Gives them an opportunity to put all those skills together for them. So I try to explain, I try to explain it to them in that way. The most important piece, and I apologize because this is kind of small, but the most important piece that I try to emphasize to the kids when we meet in junior, in March of the junior year, is picking your topic. It's so important that you pick something that you are passionate about. And I always tell them, it could be a possible career interest, or it could just be something that you're interested in. I always give my own example. I always tell the kids, I have no, I never had any intentions to be a mechanic, but I'm extremely jealous of people who can work on cars and do some pretty simple things. I would have loved to have used, you know, the capstone experience when I was in high school to do something like that. Kids have kind of gone both ways with it. Some of them followed career interests, some of them have done, you know, things that are just kind of interesting to them. But the thing that really, why I emphasize this to them is the piece that's most important to me, or the thing that really shines out, is if they're passionate about their topic, when they're presenting, that comes through loud and clear. Once they've picked their, once they've picked the topic, there's kind of three phases to the capstone, you know, doing the research, the big pieces, the field work and the field work experience journals. They spend, they have to spend a minimum of 20 hours doing field work with a mentor. A lot of students end up spending much more time than the 20 hours. There's a written component to it, a reflection paper that they have to write. And then the project culminates with the presentation before a panel of judges, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later on. We're always looking for judges. I know a number of you have volunteered in the past. I think it's May 25th or May 26th is our presentation date this year, but we're always looking for more judges. Presentations, which is like the culminating piece to them, and it's a piece that gives them the most anxiety and the most idio, because they're doing a presentation in front of people that they really don't know. They might know a teacher in the room or two teachers in the room, but there's community, community judges in there, people that have no idea. We invite the juniors, one of the things we started doing a couple of years ago, is we invite the juniors to come to the presentations. So it's a great learning opportunity for the juniors to watch the seniors do their presentations and know what they, what they can look forward to and what they can expect in a year. And these are kind of the standards for the kids. Their presentations for the, their standards for the presentations have to be at least eight minutes long, you know, at most 12 minutes long. We have a number of, you know, I think, I kind of call them strengths and opportunities for improvement here. You know, one of the biggest things, I don't know how many people were on the board, but the class of 2013, that was the first year, that's where people were throwing tomatoes at me. But we had one student, Kelsey Brown, who was actually one of our board reps, do the, do the capstone presentation early. She took advantage and worked on it over the summer, got it done, but you can see that has kind of grown exponentially over the years. 2013, we had one, 2014, we had 12, 2015, we had 42, and this year, we had 60 seniors, Ally and Admit, once again, that presented early, took advantage of, you know, got introduced in March, you know, used the spring, used the summer, got their hours done, did the written work, and then presented right at the very end of September, beginning of October, I think it was. You know, it's also, it's, it has been a great way, I think, to build community in this, in this district. We had 97 community judges last, last May. Seventy, 70 of those had returned from the year before, from 2014, then we had another 27 new ones. So that has been a big highlight. It has really caught on in town. People talk about it, they get interested in, to come up and support, you know, to support the program. The other really cool thing that has happened is we really have kids, you know, in the beginning, the first couple of years, the kids were kind of looking for, you know, the easy way to kind of get this thing done. And, you know, the past, this year and in years, a couple of years past, we really have kids starting to really extend themselves. We had, you know, a student this year who spent two weeks at Microsoft headquarters in Seattle over the summer. We had two students do third-world medicine in Guatemala. We had, we had, last year, we had a student that had as her mentor, she went to El Salvador and had as her mentor the U.S. ambassador to El Salvador. So kids are doing unbelievably amazing, amazing things. And as a result of this, a lot of kids that I talk to are getting, are getting jobs from this, or they're getting internship opportunities and things like that. So is, there are really, it has really opened up a lot of doors for our kids, and again, I think it's done a great job to build community in the town. Some of the, some of the areas that we've struggled, and we're making some improvements, and I'll go into them, having the kid meet the, having the kids meet the deadlines. We're constantly sending out school messengers, hey, this piece is due, and your capstone next. You know, it got very difficult for both Ken Rider and Carl Bodnar, our capstone coordinators, to judge the portfolios, because they were all coming in like a week before the presentation. So we have done, we've done a little work this year in increasing the rigor of the portfolios and increasing the scoring component of that for the kids, with the idea of having the kids meet the deadlines. So if they don't meet the deadlines, they're going to get dinged on it and they may have to repeat some stuff. You know, in the three years that we've done it, we've, you know, we always tell kids, it's not a pass or fail situation, although the kids get a pass, incomplete, or fail on their report cards throughout the senior year, but at the end of the project, it's a pass and it's a not yet. You know, we're not looking to fail kids, but some of them need a little extra work on either their portfolio, or they need, they might need a little extra work on their, on their presentations. And so some of the changes we've made to try to increase the rigor of the portfolio and get the, get the kids to meet these deadlines and to spend more time, because when the judges come into the room to evaluate the presentations, the first thing they do is they get their lunch, they go to the rooms, and they look at the portfolio. So we want the portfolios to represent the kids' best work. So we changed the scoring in the portfolios. They counted as one, you know, they counted as four points in the past, now they count four times that, they count as 16 possible points. We increased the passing score from a 30 out of 42, which is basically like a 71% to a 40 out of 54 with some of those other changes. Again, a lot of that was to reflect the amount of time necessary to have a presentable portfolio and to encourage the kids to meet those, to meet those deadlines. A couple of other changes, you know, some of the things that Ken and Carl and I really tried to focus on was, you know, getting the kids to really think about how they present themselves to a panel. And, you know, I tell, I make the kids, when I, when I go to talk to them about giving their presentations, I make them stand up and raise their right arm and say, you know, you have to repeat after me. I swear, Mr. Cobza, I will not start my, my, my capstone presentation with, hi, my name is Ally Moravec, and I did my, I did my capstone on, what'd you do it on?
Chemical engineering.
Chemical engineering. So you can't start it like that. We need to find an engaging way to start the, to start your presentation. And the kids have become much, they have become much more engaged, and we give them, we give them some tools for that. You know, we talk about, you know, open with an impact statement, open with a thought-provoking question, open with a personal story, stuff like that, just to get the audience, you know, kind of like that hook in the beginning of a good essay or a good presentation, get that hook out there. So that was a big, that's been a big, you know, point of emphasis for us, you know, to get the kids to think in those directions as they're doing it. The other, the other piece that, you know, we've kind of emphasized the past couple of years, and the kids have done a nice job of it, is incorporating the, there's a research component to this. And one of the things we've asked them to do is to incorporate their research into their presentation. And, you know, why we say that is the first, the first couple of years, what the kids would do is they would give their presentation, and they would talk about all these great things that they learned and all these cool things that they did, and then their last slide of their presentation was, and I read this book on, you know, mechanical imaging, engineering, and you, and, you know, I read this article on mechanical engineering, I read this. And they didn't incorporate any of the research that they did into what, into their actual presentation. So we're trying to interweave that in. So those are our two big points of emphasis, engaging openings, get the audience hooked, and then incorporating that research into the presentation throughout. You know, I kind of hit on, I kind of hit on this stuff already. This has been a huge, you know, a great community-building event for us every year. We're getting more and more judges every year. A lot of people want it, like I said, a lot of people want to keep coming back. We've made, you know, we've reached out to a lot of different organizations, Lions Club, Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, all that have been very supportive of us, and a lot of others as well. And the more, the more the word gets out, the more we're getting requests from companies. Either maybe I get more and more phone calls now, emails, hey, do you have any students who might be interested in this? We might have a capstone experience for them. And then Carl Bodnar and Ken Rider, once again, are two advisors, do a great job of matching kids up with these companies, and also helping the kids reach out and trying to find out what are the kids interested in, and reaching out to, reaching out to different companies in, in the area. You can't read all those student benefits, but I think the most important thing is, you know, capstone gives the kids the opportunity to, you know, like I said, it's a culmination of your K-12 experience in Monroe Public Schools. It really highlights those 21st-century skills, creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, problem solving. It puts it all together. And what I've said a lot of times is, you know, the capstone project itself is, is like the great equalizer. That's what I've found so far. And what I mean by that is, some of our, and it goes back to, you know, having a passion for your subject. Some of, some of our, you know, maybe not the most academic students we have have knocked the capstone project out of the park, because they found something that they're really passionate about, and if you sit in that room and you listen to them talk about it, you're just amazed at the experience that they got out of it. It's so cool. Kids that, you know, have not experienced a great deal of success in the, in the classroom, maybe their whole lives, you know, see, have seen and found great value with this. It's really, it's really cool. One of the other things, you know, the two other kind of benefits that come of it is, you know, a lot of kids that choose capstone, a capstone project as an area of a possible, you know, future job or whatever, have, have found it, you know, it's almost like 50/50 in some of the ones. I, I, it's almost like fifty-fifty in some of the ones they sit in, have found their experience to be very affirming. Oh, I really wanna do this. And then a lot of them, and I think this is even more important, find it very disaffirming, if that's a word, I don't know, unaffirming, I don't know. Um, have found, but had, they have said, you know what, I know what I don't wanna do and I do not wanna be an accountant. I do not wanna sit in front of a computer all day and crunch numbers. Holy cow, that was, you know, that was very difficult. And I think that's, I think that's a huge benefit. I think it's very, uh, very important for them to, you know, as much as it is to try to know what you wanna do for the rest of your life, to definitely marks, uh, you know, cross something off the list is equally as important. Uh, and this is just our, this is our schedule, so my little plug to you guys, uh, for any, any of you that may be available on the twenty-sixth. What we do on that day is we have a, a half day for ninth and tenth graders. Um, we dismiss everybody at, I think it's eleven o'clock in the morning, the students at eleven o'clock in the morning, the ninth and tenth graders. And then, uh, the, the cafeteria is open for the juniors and seniors. Uh, the seniors are all assigned to a classroom, the judges are all assigned to a classroom. The juniors will go and about four or five of them will listen to about four or five senior presentations in a, in a classroom. But this is kind of the schedule for the day, so if your schedule does allow and you wanna be a part of it, um, you know, I think you'll find it a valuable, um, you know, valuable, the time well spent, it's time, uh, very well spent. We, you'll have a quick judges training from ten to eleven and then from, uh, yeah, ten thirty, or ten to eleven or ten thirty to eleven, depending on if you're a returning judge or not, a quick lunch, and then the presentations go, uh, start off at twelve o'clock. And they go through pretty quickly. So that is our upst-, update on capstone. Like I said, we have come a, a long way. And, um, you know, the, like I said, the, the, and I, I knew the first year was gonna be difficult. The, you know, you know, we anticipated that parents were gonna be upset because, you know, why us, why now? That was the big rallying cry at, at the time. But even by the end of that first year, a lot of parents saw the, the value in, in capstone. And now, I mean, it's such a great part of our culture. We had the, uh, the junior launch about a month ago. We had probably about seventy-five to eighty-five families there and, um, you know, very supportive of it and, you know, some very supportive questions and, you know, a lot of, uh, you know, everyone was very happy that the program was giving their kids these opportunities.
And, you know, I can say that I've been a part of this since the beginning and, you know, I've been in education my, you know, full adult life. These experiences are unbelievable for me, um, to sit in this room. And what Joe said about students that may not have been the most academic shine, I, I've had that the last two years in a row where students have just, you know, who I didn't expect, who I knew and didn't expect to see great things, had really great opportunity. And the other story that I have is, um, and I'm sure he won't mind me saying, uh, Brian Marcone was a student that I've known since he was in middle school and he always wanted to be an EMT. That's what he wanted, that's what he wanted to do. He did his capstone, uh, with the police department in Monroe. And he did an outstanding job presenting his research. He did a great job. And I just got an email from him last week. He is, he just made it through the police academy in North Carolina. He is now a police officer in a small town in North Carolina. And, and I say it's because he was gonna go to that EMT until he learned what the police department could give him through capstone. So it, it's definitely a valuable experience and it's a valuable experience for me, sitting there listening to these young adults really shine.
And I think Ally and Amit gave a good flavor of, you know, someone who did, who fought, whose, you know, possible career aspiration, mechanical, mechanical engineering, you said right? Chemical engineering. Um, and Amit did, um, DJing and I, I didn't have a chance to see Ally's, but it was, I did have a chance to see Amit's and it was very, very interesting. Cause it's something that a lot of people probably don't think much of, uh, don't think that, don't associate with Amit Gupta quite often. It was, it was, but it was really cool.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we have no old business, so we will move on to new business. And we will have a discussion about our national school lunch program. We kind of touched on this, our last meeting, about possibly from massing, um, opting out of it, um, so.
Hey Gabby, you were gonna introduce.
Right, so we have Alan Dean, who's our, our official representative from SEDEXO and Donna Lopiano, who is our assistant operations manager here in the district. Donna's been with SEDEXO, oh my goodness, I don't even know for how many years.
Eleven years.
Eleven years, um, and has worked her way through various kitchens, um, into a management role and is very enthusiastic. Um, I think every kid here at the high school pretty much knows Mrs. Lopiano at this point. And Alan is very much behind the scenes, but he's the one who, uh, responds to the RFPs and if I have heavier lifting type questions or Jim does, he's the one that we go to. So, um, as we talked about with the RFP, I'd ask people to bid out both keeping the high school on the national school lunch program or possibly taking it off. And so Donna and Alan came and they have a short presentation to talk to you guys about it and answer any questions because I don't know tons about it, so.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for allowing us to take a couple of minutes of your time tonight. I just wanted to chat about, uh, as Gabby said, about the national lunch program. And I guess the first question is, uh, I was thinking about as I walked in there tonight, maybe not everybody really understands what that means to be on the program like we are here in Monroe and for most of the towns in Connecticut. Basically, uh, we get funding from the federal government and from the state department of education for serving what they call reimbursable meals and they have to meet certain nutritional guidelines. Four years ago, the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act was enacted into law, you may have heard of this. And it played, was really the first sweeping change in the regulation since the inception of the national school lunch program back in the, in the nineteen fifties. And why the intent was to bring fruits and vegetables and healthy meal portions to students of disadvantaged economic backgrounds. Uh, it also had a great impact in terms of the acceptability of the foods for the students because whether those portion sizes were down or we had to convert to wheat breads or calorie counts were down, things of that nature, sodium count. It really had an impact on the industry. And here in Monroe, we lost about twenty-five percent of our meal counts in one year simply because the demographic in communities where you have very few kids who qualify for a free reduced lunch, uh, most of the kids here do not. Therefore, they just didn't care for the food that we almost were handcuffed to some degree to what we could, what we could sell. And so why the council come back because the manufacturers have gotten better, we've gotten more creative. Some of the, uh, some of the requirements have relaxed over the last couple of years. It is still a challenge in the business where many school districts, outside of the school districts, will have high free and reduced populations who have a lot of government funding, uh, most of these programs find themselves to be in a deficit position. Uh, you know, and we are here in Monroe. Uh, the good fortune for the board is we have a financial guarantee that insulates you from that. So it's still a no cost program to you. Uh, it really hits the, it's our margin out of roads as we get into a deficit program. And so one of the trends has been really, and it's just really been in the last twelve to eighteen months is, what if we take, most school districts choose high schools, off the national school lunch program? What would that mean in terms of the things that we can offer, uh, and in terms of what would it do for participation in the program? Would the kids come back? Would they, uh, would they really come back and start to participate in the program or, or not? And, uh, you know, some of the, the data they were getting in is, and they are coming back more so than they were before, uh, being on the program. And the trend really started here down in Fairfield County. And a lot of the school districts down here in Newtown last year went off and, uh, well, on West End and Busport are all off the program at the high school level only. And so Gabby and I chatted about it in the beginning of the year, I said, maybe this is something you should think about. I don't know if it's gonna make sense or not, but at least, at least have a discussion about it so we all understand, you know, going forward if it's the right decision to make for Monroe. So I put together just a few pages and I thought I'd take that with you, uh, take that through with you to give, in perspective where we are at the high school and what the program would look like if we took it off. You know, there's opportunities and there's gonna be some challenges. So the first page, uh, that you had in front of you talks a little bit about where we are. The high school, and I think I saw it on the, on the video from your meeting a couple of weeks ago, the discussion was, we actually have fairly good participation at the high school. Just about half the kids buy school lunch and that is four to six points higher than the average high school in this, in this demographic. So we have a fairly robust program now and the high school in and of itself is profitable. If we drill down beyond just, you know, the reports that Gabby gets which shows the district role, if, if I drill down and look at just the schools, the high school is a profitable program if I'm just applying the expenses to that, that, that go to the school, not the overhead that continues throughout the program. So that's the good news and so the, so some of the things that we need to think about and the board needs to think about if we, uh, if it's something that we wanna do, we have to take a look, first of all, at the current kids who do qualify and participate in the program that qualify for free reduced lunch. And the, the data that I have here is just last year's meal counts and it just shows that eleven percent of all the meals we sold last year at the high school were bought by or consumed by kids for free and reduced and twenty-three percent of the breakfast were. So there is a decision to be made about whether or not you wanna continue that service for the kids who qualify for those meals. And that would be a subsidy to the board. Now, rough math from last year's numbers, if we just look at covering the cost, the food cost, it's about a thirty-six to forty thousand dollar subsidy that we have to think about if you wanted to continue to provide that service for those kids. When you go off program, that goes away. You're not required to do that, all right? The other piece that we would lose in the program is the reimbursements. Uh, we have the federal reimbursements now, which range from thirty-five cents for every child who buys a paid meal. Reimbursable meals, thirty-five cents we get from the federal government. And it's three dollars and thirteen cents for every meal that a free child participates in the program. We also have state funding. The state gives us two reimbursements. They give you four cents for every lunch sold, um, from the previous year. And they give us the second one, which is ten cents, and that's for the fact that we're on the healthy snack program. We've been doing that now for many years and so you get an extra ten cents. So that funding goes away when you go off the program, just at the high school. You'll still get it for jockeying, you'll still get it for the free elementaries, but the high school goes off, that goes away. And that's worth about eighty-five thousand dollars a year. The other piece that we lose is, uh, if you don't know, when you're on the national lunch program, you get an entitlement for commodity food dollars. So we can buy food at a discount rate, really just a few pennies, um, on the dollar. And, uh, you know, we've done a good job here in Monroe and then we, we can now buy fresh fruits and vegetables with that as opposed to some of the things you may think about, when you think about government food, um, buy fresh meats and things like that. The high school, we won't have those dollars anymore, so we'll have to go buy market value price. And that's gonna, at, at additional cost, all is being equal for about twenty thousand dollars. So there is about a hundred thousand dollar hole that has to be filled going off the program. Some basic math to, to, just to backfill that piece, you'd have to have another hundred and twenty-five or so kids at an average price of five dollars participate every day in the program just to get back to, back to where we are today. And then, you know, then we have to look at the ways to, to grow the program from there. So that's a little bit about, you know, I guess I'll talk about challenges, uh, that we would face. There is, it's not without risk and I'm certainly, I'm not here to sell the program, to go off the program. I just, I wanna educate and so we can have a discussion about whether or not it makes sense for, uh, for this community or not. So there is exposure, certainly financial, but there is opportunity. Right now, we only serve, I think, eleven hundred of the, of the thirteen hundred possible kids cause those two hundred kids, as I understand, they, they can schedule to leave, leave school before lunch starts and or not schedule lunch at all. So there's some opportunity to get some of those kids back, uh, once we understand where they're going and why they're leaving school, uh, to eat somewhere else. Anyway. So the next page is, I asked Donna to just do, uh, a market basket analysis here in Monroe to get an understanding of what kids are going, where they like to eat. And really, it kinda came down to four restaurants, uh, Soup Time, Bill's Drive-In, McDaddy's and Buffalo Bill's. So we have an understanding of what they like and the price point they will pay for lunch to perceive it's good value. Cause the reality is if you go off the program, then you really become kind of a retail market based operation. And now, you know, you know, the, the larger community is now competition to the way we can run the program here. So it's how do we, it's no longer captive audience as much as it is today. So those are the, maybe you guys agree or disagree, but I'll ask you a little while here, but that's, uh, that's what we understand. So the next page is, so what does it look like if we go off the program? Currently, there is a, there's a reimbursable meal and in talking to, we have about eighteen high schools across the country that are off program now. They started last year or two years ago. Uh, all agree that there should be a base meal price, which would be the same type of food that you have today, plus the two sides and a milk which completes the meal. And we would propose charging three dollars and thirty-five cents for that. Right now, there's a, a range of two eighty-five to three thirty-five for, uh, the selling price, depending what you get. Pizza's, I think is the least expensive, right?
Yes.
And it ranges up to the Borsed Deli's three thirty-five. So to help recoup some of that lost twenty-nine cent reimbursement or thirty-three cent reimbursement, we would, uh, suggest doing that. And this would also be the, the meal that if you choose to continue to fund, the, the kids who qualify for free and reduced to have lunch, this would be where they would go, this would be the type of meal that they would have available to them. Beyond that now is when we start to talk about the things that we can do outside of the national lunch program. Hello, are, are the five stations, the stations that we have in the food court in the cafeteria. And so in addition to the base meal, then we would be positioning products, all cart pricing and cash pricing, and at a higher price because there's, we'll talk about the differences that they would have in doing that. Creation station right now, uh, is a kind of a home comfort food station. And so we would propose to, to increase the portion sizes, also do fresh carving every day, as well as light display cooking every single day. So it would be, it would be fresh in front of you, larger portions and greater variety was currently available in the base meal. And we're really looking at a kind of a price point of around five dollars, give or take, for all of these meals. And that would be bundled, you still can get two sides and you can still get a milk. If you wanna buy something different, uh, in terms of water or, or Snapple, that would be all a cart. But you can still get that five dollar bundle, so you get a better quality product. The pizza station, uh, we would propose and what's worked well, it's a fresh flatbread pizzas made to order, have a special oven, do a lot of upgraded toppings, avocado, bacon, uh, fresh mozzarella, uh, fresh made on basil, things like that, for a little bit of a less price, four seventy-five. The grill, Coman's All Natural Meats is a, is an organic product that is a very, uh, it's one of the best products I've seen out there in the school lunch program. So we'd offer six ounce burger for that with a lot of different toppings that we don't currently offer, uh, on different types of cheeses, vegetables, sauteed mushrooms. There'll be vegetarian option as well in terms of the burger. Deli, we would double the, the portion size of the Borsed meats. We would also have six to eight different types of breads that are currently available and we currently couldn't sell under the national lunch program. So focaccias and ciabatte's and italias and things like that would be available. We serve paninis now, we'd continue that. And we would also then bundle, uh, fresh made soup. We'd offer either a broth or, or cream base with half a sandwich for five fifty, uh, which is, uh, you know, significantly, all this is significantly priced under the retail market, uh, but still allows us to operate in an environment that it works. And then finally, the salads right now, we, we actually, we have a fairly good salad bar, it's fairly robust. Uh, we would off, we would continue to, to offer more options as well as you cannot go over and get Borsed meat to use, to, to have with your salad. You currently can't do. And, uh, we would propose going from a, a selling price of three thirty-five to a per ounce price of somewhere in the forty-two, forty-five cent range. Uh, and that would bring us to three thirty-five for portions that we serve today. And if you wanna have more than you can, it's just, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for it. And the last thing is, we, we are proposing to bring in a, we have an approved vendor locally, the Sushi House, to bring sushi, uh, to bring this company in every day to make sushi fresh daily, uh, every morning, much like you see in the supermarkets and sell that for lunch for six dollars as well. Cause that seems to be, from what I can tell, uh, it's a, it's more than just a trend. It seems to, it, it sustains itself. So there, it's a higher price point, but, uh, but it's something that continues to sell. So that's a little bit about what the program will look like, uh, you know, we continue to look at food free. And the way, if we decide to do this, that I think is the best way to move forward is, one, we would develop what I call a student board of directors. So we would have, uh, identified children, children, sorry, kids, students, I have young kids. And they would work with us and it'd be our liaison. We'd work together on menu and strategy and they would have input and they would be really our liaison with the rest of the community. Together we would build a program and then, once we get to that place, uh, in May and June, we would do testings and tastings, uh, in the cafeteria, really of all the things that could be coming for the next year if we chose to do this to get some, some feedback and some perspective as to whether or not it really makes sense. So that's a little bit about on program, off program. I have a few more things to talk about, but I don't know if you wanna stop there and just talk about that piece now.
Does anybody have questions right now?
Just, the manpower, you, you need a lot more. This is why the cost, not just the product, of also the people preparing the foods. I'm asking to require a lot more.
Not as much as you would think. And really, the, the, the difference in pricing really is food costs. You know, food costs will go, one, we lose a commodity, so now we have to pay retail pricing. And two, it'd be a better level, uh, quality of ingredient. pricing, and two, it'd be a better level, quality of ingredient, and, you know, for instance, on the, on the deli, we double the portion of meats, you know, we have to adjust the pricing accordingly. And it really gives a, a choice, as to whether or not you can stay with what you have, or you can upgrade if you wish.
Alan.
Did the towns that came off the program, did they lose money?
They have not lost money. I don't have, of course, I, I don't have data for the towns down here, although I think you talked to Newtown, they said-
I talked to Newtown. Newtown has actually turned a profit from the get-go.
And I know that the school districts that we do across the country have seen sales increase, after you backfill the loss, have seen sales increase forty to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on the market. You know, the fact of the matter is, every community has a culture of eating school lunch. As silly as that may sound, you can have two towns sitting right next to one, are same menus, they'll buy here, or they don't buy here, it's just, you know, so you don't really know them either. And, you know, I'd be really interested to know what you guys think about, you know, I know this is broad strokes, but does this sound something that's appealing?
Um, I mean, I know both, both of it, and I actually have all eight periods of classes, so we don't have one.
One of the one ninety-two.
Yeah, but, I mean, it sounds, yeah, it sounds good, I guess.
So, it's, you know, it's a work-
How many schools that you cover are off of it? You said-
We have about eighteen across the country.
Across the country.
And the fact of the, it's just, it is relatively new. It is something that, it would be trying to find solutions to, to, to bring fiscal health back to these programs. If you don't impact a lot of kids, if you have less than seven or eight percent of your kids qualifying for free and reduced lunch, then it's a viable option. And if the students are willing to spend the money, if we're willing to provide a product that they perceive to be of quality, that they could find out in the retail market, then it's something that works.
It might be a crazy question. Once you're off, you're off, or can you go off for a year and then on?
On and off, on and off. Real good, if it's, if it's a bust, then you can go back. But, you know, the hope is that once we go, we'll make it work in them.
Do you have a question for us?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do you have, let's say we stayed on the program. Is there any plan that you guys have in, in place to try to attract students back, or increase our, our revenue, if we stay on the plan? Or are we, the current path that we're on, is there any improvement that you guys can see?
We have, I'm sorry, we have added on, actually, I do hibachi now, which we've never done before, and the kids love it, they come in, you can smell it down the hallway. So, we are constantly trying new things to gather, the kids come in, and it seems to be working slowly. I'm seeing more of our kids just want more food. I mean, we have a lot of football players up here, we have people who cross now, a lot of sports kids that eat at ten-thirty, and by twelve, they're hungry, they're starving. And it's, so I think with the, what Alan's saying, is given a big, bigger portion size, I think it's going to intrigue a lot of our kids up here. That's what I see. When I talk to the kids, the sports kids, they're definitely willing to have more. They just want to eat more and feel like they've eaten for the day, you know, at like ten o'clock, and then ten-thirty, and then by twelve, they don't have to say, I'm starving, then I have to go play sports, they're just looking for more food. So, I think it's a great opportunity to try this. I think it'll be fun for them.
We put a significant investment in mostly the high school, and we, really what we call the server, the front-of-the-house equipment, and I don't know if you've ever had the opportunity to go into the high school to eat, and invite you to do so, because it really is, I think, a great program, and I think it rivals, I mean, I'm looking at the menus that are off-program in the, in this part of the state, and I think, you know, our, our program rivals a lot of those programs right now. We bottomed out at about thirty-six percent of the kids participating right after the change, and now we have grown that up to almost fifty percent. So, they're coming back, and we're doing different things, and as regulations ease, or manufacturers get better at providing more appealing products, we continue to grow the program back. So, it has not gone backwards, it's gone slowly but surely, two or three points, three points a year, we've brought that participation back to a place where a lot of school districts in this, in this demographic, as I said in the beginning, just are not at it at this point, you know?
A menu and a-
Well, I guess, like, touching back on what Mr. Reynoso said, when you start doing all these, like, live cooking, and you're going to have made-to-order all the stuff, besides also, like, it seems like it would need more people, staff, it won't you have large gluts in terms of, like, people moving through the cafeteria in that small space? That's going to take longer to make, make to order everything, that you're going to have, like, logistic issues coming up, especially also as you increase the variety of vendors and the food you serve.
I'll let you know more soon. We, it, it, it is live in front of you, but there's a lot of staging that gets done behind the scenes, so when you actually get into meal service, it's very easy to put together.
We've already prepared ahead, so I'm out displaying, even though we have some ready to go, nice and hot, ready to go.
Reality is, if somebody makes it in front of you, or is sitting in a, in a container, people will gravitate to be made in front of you. It'll be the same food, made at the same time, with the same people, it's just perception. And so, that is something that is always in demand, and that is, you know, we have it now, from time to time, and we just release that previously.
And for that base three thirty-five lunch, would that be more analogous to what we currently serve?
Correct.
Than the three thirty-five lunch?
Correct.
Shannon, did you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
The eighteen schools across the country that have gone off the program, is it all just high schools?
Just high schools. We haven't, we haven't ventured into, and the industry hasn't ventured into the middles and the elementaries. I think we're a little bit more sensitive to the elementary-age kids who qualify for free and reduced meals, because we find that, why maybe eleven percent at the high school of, of the meals we sold were free and reduced, that ratio was always higher at the elementary schools. And I don't have the number here for Monroe, I can get that, but I suspect it would probably be twenty or twenty-five percent, simply because elementary kids who qualify for free and reduced, they just go in and buy. And as you get older, and you get, especially in the high school, there, there is, becomes a stigma associated, even though it's anonymous, and nobody would know the difference, it just, there is that, that perception that the kids who qualify just don't want to do it because of the fact that they feel they're going to be, that their peers are going to know. And that's why we always see very little participation of the free and reduced at the high school versus at the elementary school. So, we're not ready to, to move to that place yet.
So, financially, I think that makes sense to do it.
Not a, not, 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 not yet. And I don't know if it's the right thing to do at that grade level yet, so.
John.
So, but you're still saying that we would still have free and reduced lunch at the high school, those students would still be, have an opportunity-
We will know, I mean, just, you know, you'll still know who qualifies for free and reduced. We'll have that in our point-of-sale system, it'll, it'll, it'll function just like it does today, but the, the difference will be is, there'll be no reimbursement, so-
Right, but those students will still be able to have the opportunity to have free and reduced.
Right, and that's the decision that this board will have to make, is, is to whether or not they want to continue that and subsidize the cost associated with it.
I know we're only on the high school right now, but I thought previously, somewhere we had heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, something was to be done with the food at Jockey Hall, either more vending machines, or there was something we had talked about, either last meeting or the meeting earlier, and I know you're shaking your head yes.
We talked about grab-and-go, we talked about-
Grab-and-go, okay.
Grab-and-go. You know, jockey is, is a very small space, and you know, and it's a problem in many schools across, you know, you know, our state and across the country, is they're just not designed for the, for the way we eat today. And so, one of the challenges that we have is, if there's a long line, kids are just not going to participate, and simply because we can't get them through, because there's not enough space. So, to help alleviate that, we want to take some of our signature items that are grab-and-go at the high school, and bring that down to Jockey Hall, so we can find a way to, to service those kids better than they are right now.
And actually, I, I just tried that out, now, about two weeks ago with Terry. I told her to make some sandwich, some Boarshead sandwiches, wrap them up, see if the kids want to grab them and go, or if they want to stop and pull in, say, can I have some of this, or put some lettuce on their plate, and it turned out really good.
It did take off.
I was really, really surprised. And also, we had to, some to-go salads, and Terry said, all three of them went like that, first one's white. So, there is a need for it, and we're definitely making the room, we just got another well over there, so we're definitely working with Terry to enhance that.
Thank you. Anybody else right now?
School last comment, I, I love the concept, I mean, I think, you know, school law trends, and all these different things that I think, and the competitors that are out there, including those in the community. I love the fact, I appreciate the feedback from the kids, the students, especially those that are interested in culinary arts. I mean, I definitely, you know, I know another program that you do, just, I, I love that because I think we need to obviously hear from them and see what their, what, what their trend, what the trends are. Sometimes we might think something, and, and I know you do a fabulous job, by the way, because the kids speak highly of you, and I-
Thank you. And I also teach a class here-
Oh, great.
With the culinary arts, so yes, I, I think it would be a great opportunity to get a couple of them, and even maybe come at another board meeting at another time, and hear their, their sides, because I, I always pick at their brains, and they're like, okay, come on, but it's fun.
Anybody else that we want to continue along?
Is there any way we could get, well, are we reviewing the next?
We'll go to the next.
Okay.
We'll go to the next.
Do you want to hold on?
All right, then a whole.
All right? Okay. So, one of the innovations that, that we try to capitalize on, I'm sure everybody's aware in the marketplace, that food trucks have become, they're a big hit, and they're, they're, they're virtually in every town now, and they're very, very successful. So, we developed our own food truck brand two years ago, and for the most part, we, we rolled it out down south, for obvious reasons, they have a longer season, but I think it's a great idea, and we have some data now in the window, Providence Public Schools is one of our partners, and we rolled a couple food trucks out, they have, obviously, many, many more high schools. But, it was received with, with great enthusiasm, and we ran it all through the fall season and the late summer season, and, and counts never really dropped. It's, there's something about going to the food truck, there's a menu associated with it that's developed just for the food truck, we'll talk a little bit about it, but it's an innovative concept, it's something different, thinking a little bit outside the box, and it's another way that we can really enhance the quality of life of the kids by giving them something different. You know, the fact of the matter is, you know, lunch is a bit of a time to blow off some steam, to socialize, and, and so if we can help the quality of life in that process, I think this is a great way to do it. It really, it's a trailer, to be honest, it's not a truck, but it's, it's of the size of a, of a truck, and it's of the capacity of a food truck that you would see on any of the streets, I'm sure you go down Long War from New Haven, you see them all down there. What you have in front of you is a picture of the actual trailer that's sitting outside one of Providence High Schools, and it's a, it's a neat-looking trailer. It, it's, it's fully operational, it's a, it's really a kitchen on wheels, it runs off a generator and propane, so it's self-contained, you don't need to run wires and things of that nature. And I thought that, at Massey, it would be a neat place, somewhere up on that, what do you call it, the upper-tier parking.
Yeah, if you know where my office is, the back door right there, is, we have green, so you could put a couple picnic tables over there, and the truck could be right over that way. That's why it's close to the going in and out, and the kids are contained up here, so we have a view of them.
Now, I proposed this without really knowing the security at the high school, and I don't know if this will violate the security policy or not, but I want you at least to understand that this is something that's available, and that, and that we do well, and has been well-received in the markets that we've rolled them out, so it's, it's, it's there. Unfortunately, what you can't see on the second page is, very well is the menu, but there's, there's five formats, I'm going to get, I have a, do I have a closer? There's five formats that have worked well in this, in the food truck, and it's around tacos and macaroni and cheese, southwest barbecue, some such as, which are chicken, and tortas, and everything is made from scratch, all the sauces, all the sides are all made from scratch, and I have to, I mean, I've had them, we do this format, we can do it in a food truck, we can do it in a school, and, and brand it like a food truck, the food really is fantastic, and the kids love it. So, it's a big hit, and I think it's something that would be well-received here, and I think the truck atmosphere, if, if that works for Massey, I think, I think the kids, it would, it would be well-received. So, that's a, something that we propose as part of this package at this time around. George, you have a question?
No.
Oh, I thought you were-
Go ahead, please. Holding.
All right. Then the last thing that, to talk about is, is the fact that we want to introduce food service after school. My oldest daughter is in high school, and she plays sports all through, all the seasons, and so I certainly have become aware of just how hungry they are, and her friends, I just, I can't believe that people can eat that much, but they, they require that kind of energy, and, and it's, you know, it's just something that we, you know, in the industry have not done very well, outside of, of communities where we do, you know, federal dinner programs and snack programs, but this would be something that would, we would open in the cafeteria from two to three-ish, I mean, this is, you know, details to be determined, and we would sell salads, sandwiches, yogurt parfaits, smoothies, things like that, that are healthy, will provide energy, calories, and will help them to maintain their energy level through the day, so. As I reviewed your, your video from a couple weeks ago, that seemed like the two things that were of interest, so I thought I'd bring those up against.
Jeff?
Do you have an after-school program in any of those schools?
No, I'm, this year is the first year that we're going to, that we're introducing it. It's, again, it's something new. It's, it's one, it provides a service for the kids, it also provides a different source of, of revenue outside of the cafeteria line, it's just ways to, to better service the community, and to, and to, and to bounce out of it with fiscal health, so.
Do you have to be off the school lunch program to offer the after-school meal service?
On or off? This would be all à la carte, this wouldn't be any of this, whether you're on or off, this would not be real.
That's, I, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just cash.
George, just a quick question.
Yeah, okay, so, eighty-five thousand loss of federal and state reimbursements, and twenty thousand increase in food commodity costs because we have to go to the market, right? Not subsidized. And then thirty-six thousand for us to subsidize the free and reduced lunch, right?
And choose to do that, yeah.
Okay, so a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in risk, so, is there any way you guys could put together some projections around how we would make, make that up and stay neutral?
I have, I mean, I can share with you the, we submitted a, we submitted two budgets as part of the, the RFP response, one was on NSLP, and one was off the program, so I'd be happy to share that with you, and the numbers that are there, Gabby.
Okay.
We have, we have them, and the, and the rationale behind the numbers is really was, we looked at a fifteen percent increase over current counts, at an average price of four-seventy-five, is how I got to the number that I put in for that budget for next year for going off program. And it, you know, it is to some degree speculation, we, we don't really know, you can make a, you can make an estimate, guess, best guess, estimate based on some of the data that we have out there from the other schools that we do, but, you know, we have to run it for a year to really see how it, how it goes.
And now, the Board of Ed risk would be roughly thirty-six to forty thousand.
That's your risk.
Right.
The rest of the risk, quite honestly, is on us, because this will still be a no-cost program for this board, so if this tanks, you know, it's, it's, Sedex is margin, not the Board of Ed general fund that has to, to, has to backfill any deficit.
Would, would anyone here have a rough idea how many seniors are taking eight periods a day? How many?
Eight periods is really uncommon, but what is really common is leaving early.
That's what I did when I was here.
And I must say, about leaving early, I don't really think they're leaving early because they don't want to eat lunch in the cafeteria, I think they're leaving early because they just want to go home, or like, go to sleep or something.
Yeah.
I think the one ninety-two was the, the last number I had, I think that might have been a February number, I had Katie did some research.
Thank you. One ninety-two?
One ninety-two out of the thirteen or so hundred.
Joe, do we have any updates on what the schedule's being put in? How many students would, incoming seniors next year would be taking advantage of the leaving early as opposed to? How many students would, um, incoming seniors next year would be taking advantage of the leaving early as opposed to?
Just under, it's just underway now, um, the, the schedule's just being built now. I, I imagine we'll probably have similar numbers next year. The year after that may be a little bit different because that's when we, uh, that's part of the whole new graduation requirements.
Right, so they need more credits to graduate.
More credits, they're gonna need a fourth year of math. But I still think, you know, maybe still need early. Yeah, I get the sense, like, I agree with Dally. Uh, I don't think it's as much of lunch that they need early as especially see it as a kind of a credit.
They just want to go home or they're, they're looking to go to work and, you know, so I've talked to quite a few of them and that's, you know, it's not, they're going to go out to get something to eat. They're just wanting to go home and get ready for work or do what they, they need to do.
And we do have declining enrollment at high school. I don't know if that's.
And that has been, you know, that's been, one of the challenges here has been declining enrollment really over the last, and I went back six years, I think around then it was thirty-seven or thirty-eight hundred was the enrollment. And now we're down quite a bit. And that's, you know, that's common everywhere. Uh, and that's one of, that's one of our big challenges is, you know, you know, we have labor negotiations coming up next summer and we're gonna have to take a look at where our current levels are and we need to adjust accordingly. A lot of big, uh, labor contracts in this part of the world.
And we still have five more years of declining enrollment up here.
Anybody have any other question?
I don't know if we're to like a comment stage yet. But what I'd say is like, I think I was also like skeptical when I'm looking at like the hundred, twenty thousand, hundred forty thousand down shortfall. But I think with the extra costs and with the new things, I think that could probably be made back. You could extra generate like seven hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars a day from kids. Because I think the, this like scare, um, like the issue is that you're, you are moving more towards the Mac Daddys, the Bills and stuff like that, when we come more restaurant-like in terms of that thing. But I think what's the real lucrative opportunities for us is how about having outdoor seating? Instead of just the food truck, I think the real thing is outdoor seating, having more grab and go. So that the seniors that leave early, maybe instead of going off to McDonald's or going off to Bill's, they just grab something from here, go off with their friends, hang out wherever and they still have food from here that they could take out. So like having new ways for kids to, to get access to the food, not necessarily eat in the cafeteria. So I think the big issue that people don't like the idea of being in school, being in the cafeteria, there's just something about being outside or being in other places to eat that's like, um, people like more. And in terms of like the lunch pricing, yeah, like there's some that's like low over, some that's low under five. Just like making it five across the board, just like, just like simplify the whole like process out for people. And then I think the after-school is really cool, but like maybe even like expanding those hours. So it's like people right before practice, right after practice, maybe when they're running in the halls, get something. People are just doing other after-school things like that.
And you have to remember, we have a lot of towns that come and play sports here.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're getting their money hopefully, you know, to us too, so you're absolutely right in that.
George?
Have we conducted any surveys of the students, uh, to find out what?
That'll be part of this, part of this process. We just, uh, we finally have revamped a survey process to, to a place where I think it's one that makes sense. Right now, we do, you know, whether it's Survey Monkey or we do Pay, I mean, I don't really think that's the way that, that, that really speaks to students anymore. So, we're gonna do live digital surveys, give kids cameras and things like that and walk around and let us see real-time, uh, what the operation looks like from their perspective and then have some open dialogue, uh, also real-time. So we can take a look at how we better improve the product, you know, for next year, but maybe for next week. So, but that'll be part of this process too. It'll be a lot of student involvement. If this is something that we want to really look at and pursue, is we need to engage the kids. Because I really think if they feel like they're part of it and have buy-in, I think they'll be more likely to participate.
Jerry?
Principal Cobb, I hate to put you on the spot. What's your initial thought about the food truck?
I have.
Just from the gut?
Probably just, I don't know where, you know, how we.
I was thinking the same thing. I mean, I think it's, it's great, I'm just not sure where.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I think it's awesome, but I agree with you. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? All right. Um, I'll put this out. Is this something that we want to consider for next year and try it for a year and see, um, how it works? And it's about a net thirty-six to forty thousand dollar, um, hit to, to us as a, to subsidize it. And we can go from there and see if it is something successful that we want to continue with being able to go off and on. If it doesn't work.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking also.
Yeah, I think it's worth a shot.
I, I think after what they said, you guys did an awesome job. I mean, you really did. You didn't, I, I think it's worth a shot also.
And I think some of the kids will be very appreciative.
Oh, yeah, they'll be very happy.
Of being able to eat and have larger portions. Everybody's in favor of that, do we?
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion to, um, take Mastic High School off our national school lunch program and proceed with the plan from SEDEXO?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Great, motion passes. We will proceed and you can get going with all the surveys and, uh, stuff. And we'll have you coordinate that through Gabby.
It was a great job, guys, you did.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item B, which I'm sure is of importance to our Mastic reps, which is setting our graduation dates. Um, so, uh, do I have a motion to approve June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen for the Jockey Hall recognition night and June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen for the Mastic High School graduation? I'm sorry, some, Shannon, thank you. Do I have a second? Jerry, any discussion on that? All in favor? Right, motion passes, we have set next that we can publish now.
Parents will be very happy about that. I know Joe and Jack will send out a, uh, tomorrow morning.
All right. Um, next up on the agenda is discussion of foreign travel. Um, this is on the agenda for obvious reasons. Um, all our three trips did proceed, um, this year, but the question comes up as we have had an incident in the fall in Paris. We've had an incident in Brussels. Do we want to? And John has moved, gone forth and got some possible new field trip policy language from CAEPFAS that we may want to look into, um, for the policy committee incorporating. The question lies as, do we want to put a moratorium on foreign trips for the next year, given the state of what's going on in the world? Or do we want to continue to approve trips and, and, and try to rewrite our policy, um, to protect the kids and the parents and ourselves, um, to make decisions to then cancel?
What have other districts been doing?
It's, it's kind of all over the board. Some districts have canceled their April, they had April trips planned and they canceled. We heard from that, um, a couple of districts in the area did that, they canceled their April trips. It's just kind of been all over the board. Jim and I have had a lot of discussions about this and, and with Joe and, and, you know, there, there's been a lot of angst about it. You know, when the first thing happened in Paris, there was a conversation, do we, you know, do we call, do we call people in and, and now talk about it? And actually, we did and found out that people would still lose almost half their money if we canceled it way back when Paris had it. And then when the Brussels happened, um, that kind of just brought everything really up to the surface. And we had a meeting with the chaperones. You know, the question is, were the chaperones willing to take that risk too? That was a big, that's a big deal. They take a lot of responsibility to take those kids to, to these countries and that's huge. And our chaperones were still willing to do that. But what if they weren't willing to do that? What if we didn't have a chaperone that was willing to do that, um, you know, do the parents lose all their money? And even with the insurance that you can buy, you don't get your money back because you're afraid to go. There has to be something that happens. And so there was a lot of conversations around that. So, you know, we thought, maybe do we take a year off, look at it, look at our policy, see what the world looks like in a year and then, and then go back to, or even, don't even say a year. Say, let, let's look at it again in December next year or whatever, because we have to do fundraising. That's just really been the conversation. And we've talked to the, to the, um, trip advisors and, you know, our trip advisors are great. They, they, they kept our kids safe, they kept us informed, you know, it was a good opportunity. But Joe can tell you, those weeks are difficult for us. And we know how difficult it is for the chaperones, but it was difficult for us to be back here. And this is, happens every year and it's not just because of, um, you know, the, the state of the world, but lots of things happen on trips. So, we were just talking about that, that, you know, there were other opportunities, can, would, could park and wreck, maybe take some responsibility and do that instead of the school. So, there's been a lot of discussions and we thought we'd just have it here just to see if, you know, is, is it time for us to just take a break? And see what's going on.
What language, has CAEP changed any language on their trips or?
Uh, they, they offered a couple of opportunities to, you know, to say to parents, you know, under the Board of Education, if, if, if the trip changes because circumstances, whether man-made or natural, would warrant a cancellation in, in the interest of the safety of our students, the board is not financially responsible. Uh, you know, we could say that? When it comes to that, I don't know really what, what the bottom line is, but at least we could say that. And again, parents were upset, if we, we, those ninety people that were here, if we said we were gonna cancel the trip, over half of them would have been, probably three-quarters of them, would have been more upset because of that. They wanted to go, they felt like, you know, that they were, they were willing to take that risk. Did, did we have people who chose not to go?
We had one and you had none.
I had zero.
I know you, you had three, so, um, you, I think there was one or maybe two, uh, in Germany.
Germany.
Amit?
Well, I think like the big question is, is this an idea of stopping trips or is just the board distancing itself from having trips that go on?
Not sure with that.
From my point of view, I don't want to stop the trips, I want to be careful where they go. I'm not stop, I don't want to look to stop any travel, I just want to watch where it's going.
See, but the problem with that, I'm sorry, the problem, it's not so much stopping the trips. I think it's just delaying them for now, just to see where the world is going. Because, you know, the fact is, it's, it's, it's a little messy out there right now. And, you know, it's a big chance setting them out without all the mess beforehand. And now it's just not much more. I mean, I know from experience from my daughter going on trips. And thankfully, we have the technology so we can hear from them and everything and, like you guys said, they hear from them. But right now, I mean, just to see what was going on in Brussels and Paris and, and to see the actual footage.
Oh, yeah.
And that one, that, uh, that one group that was there and the kids were right, literally right there. You see the ceiling tiles falling on them. Thankfully, it was just ceiling tiles.
That's, that's what it meant.
And it's not so much whether we're responsible or not. Uh, I'm not looking at it, okay, if I make a decision that I say yes for field trips, that doesn't mean that, you know, little Johnny's gonna go on a field trip. It's up to his parents though. But it's up to us to figure out what's, what we feel is best. And I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I would, you know, it's like rolling the dice.
Oh, no, what I meant is, and I could've said it wrong, I, I don't have any problem with a trip to Florida.
Yeah, maybe we could do domestic trips.
That's what I was gonna say, why can't we offer domestic?
Well, this is what it's saying, just foreign trips.
Right, because there's no domestic option. There was only, there's only foreign travel. So, you might open it up to parents who are, I, like, honestly, I never let Alicia go to the foreign.
That, that was my.
And that was my personal choice, but if there was a domestic option, I probably would've allowed her to go. But there's not even that as an option for parents.
Right. So.
Right now, we're just talking about.
We're talking about foreign travel, whether we put a moratorium on foreign travel, but quite honestly, it's not a moratorium on travel because if there's.
That's all.
A teacher out there who would like to do a trip to, let's say, the Grand Canyon with the kids or something like that. I mean, that's domestic, we're not, I don't think we're talking about not allowing that. We're talking about, you know, think of it, there's thirty kids on a trip, that's very attractive to an ISIS group. Thirty American kids on a trip is a very attractive target. Out there.
What's the, um, government saying about, uh, foreign travel? I mean, are we, is anyone paying attention to that?
Yeah, yes, we, we did pay attention. We looked it up, there, there were alerts, not the highest level, it was the lowest level alert, and it said all of Europe, um, until the end of June. If it was the next level and we told that to the parents that were here and the chaperones, we, we would've canceled it, but it was at that lowest level that that was there. Um, you know, there, there were lots of opportunities for, um, parents and students and our, and our chaperones to sign up for alerts from the State Department, so they, they were, they could get information right away from, through text messages. So, there's a lot of that stuff. But again, there was still an alert that said all of Europe.
So, if they get an alert, the problem is the parents lose their money?
If the parents chose not to go, if it became, if there was a, a terrorist activity in the city in which they're going, then they could've gotten their money back. But if it wasn't there, then the parents would lose their money.
I just had a, a comment, I mean, um, my family comes from Western Europe and then, uh, South America. So, I, I do, um, always say on the fact that I think, um, world or real world, um, experiences and, and even, um, uh, I should say, um, exposure is great, especially if they're tying in with, with some curriculum that they're covering. But I agree on the fact that right now, uh, we're in a state and of, of, of some messy, as you, as you call that, messy situations. And I think siding with safety right now is my concern, but, um, so I'm for exposure and taking the kids to different places to, to, but, uh, I think safety is my concern and I think parents ultimately make the last decision, that, that is true. But, uh, we just have to be very careful, um, yeah, on, on what is going on and just keep an eye on. So, I, this is a very difficult discussion because I know there are kids that would love to, of course, travel the world.
Alan?
Does domestic travel include like Canada too, or just the United States?
Domestic, what I would say would include just the United States.
Okay. So, if someone wanted to go to Canada, then?
Then that would be a case-by-case basis, I would say. I'm sorry, Amit?
Well, I think when we get these different issues and these different attacks that happen all over, there's like a big idea of, oh, like, we don't want to go there. But the US is not necessarily a safer country. New York, Aurora Springs, San Bernardino, Sandy Hook, tragedy strikes everywhere, across this country and across all these other countries. We have violence and shooting attacks and terrorism attacks here. I think the whole reason it's called terrorism is because it makes us afraid to travel, afraid to go other places. And I think what Mr. Strange and what Ms. Sherry could talk to us about, is the idea that international travel has a much broader effect on us than going to Florida. Like, there's, there's things that you gain by experiencing other country, uh, other cultures, whether it's in Germany or Spain or Portugal or France or wherever it is. The reason why we do international travel is to grow ourselves in ways that you can't really do in domestic because there's different cultures, different languages, different cuisines and things that we're not necessarily gonna get here. I think while, like, there are issues, obviously, safety is a big issue, I don't think that necessarily should like stop going to other countries. Like, there's a difference between going to places with displaced governments or with guerrilla warfare. There's, there are different places that are in the middle of civil wars or things like that versus going to other countries. Like, any country could be next. It's not necessarily that they're gonna hit the same place twice.
All right, so how do we want to proceed? Does anybody have any other questions or comments for? Jen?
I think, um, first of all, I think he, you know, what Amit said was very eloquently spoken. I think that he has a very good point. Um, I'm thinking it and I'm looking at it through the lens of an educator, you know, when it comes to, um, at the end of the day, we have to, we, we hold a responsibility of keeping our kids safe, keeping our students safe. You know, in, in agreeing with what everyone has said about the value of the meaningfulness of the educational benefit of, of going on these trips, I, I totally advocate for it. Um, I think we just gotta keep it in perspective that we're not saying that we don't, that this is gonna be an indefinite or permanent decision, but it's something that, that we need to really take into consideration, very careful consideration now because the reality is that the alerts, while, you know, you can, uh, um, research what the government is saying and, and, and what, and, you know, everything doesn't get reported. There's a lot more that's happening that, that we know. And so thinking, wearing the cap of a parent, wearing the cap of an educator, I would say that we take very, into very careful consideration that for, for now, we, we, we kind of hold off. If, um, at the end of the day, it becomes where, you know, an issue of parents really want to have their children to have this exposure and we have to then weigh in the spirit of, again, safety and sensitivity to everyone's wishes, what is in their best interest? And that, you know, parents can opt to, on their own, to expose their kids to these opportunities after they leave us or beyond this year. And I'm not saying that, you know, in, in a manner of being, uh, in any way insensitive. I'm saying that, again, just keeping focused on the reality of where we are in the world today, literally today.
Great, thank you, great point. Uh, so what do we want to do is the question? And what do we want to vote on? That we take a moratorium?
I don't know, we should do a year, but maybe, I mean, we're at the end of the school year now, so this is not gonna be, this is, this is gonna start for the new school year.
Right, and we also have a trip on our agenda.
Yeah, so, um, I mean, I think that we should talk about a moratorium until like through, through December for now and then revisit it to see how things are going in December for the second half of the year, for other trips for the second half of the year, after the Christmas break.
Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
A question, Jamie, um, and Ben, when do you have, when, when would you have to, like, if you wanted to plan a trip for not next year, but the year after, when would you have to start doing that planning?
It takes about a year between the beginning of the planning and the actual execution of trip. Which is why I wanted to get this out after the trip on as soon as I could.
If we put, if there's a moratorium for January, till January of next year, I'm just throwing out a date. You wouldn't be able to go next year, but would you be able to go the year after?
Well, yes. I, I'm curious though to know what metric would be used to determine whether things had settled down in the world.
I think that would be up to the board.
The news.
Yeah.
It's just the obvious. If things are settling down or if things are getting worse. I mean, we've had so many different things happen and so quickly and so often. And yes, as Amit said. And yes, as Amit said, it could happen here, too.
Absolutely.
But for some reason, you always feel a little bit safer when you're home, when you're on home turf, right? It's just like a game. When you're playing baseball at home, you always think you're gonna win. So the way I look at it is, we go on watching the news like we always do now. We have the alerts that we subscribe to, and we know on, on that basis. We don't have a choice. There's no other metric that we can use unless there's something that the government can provide us. But there isn't. And as, and as James said, we don't hear everything. It's like that movie, Good Morning Vietnam. Remember the two guys, the twins, that were scratching up the, that wasn't being allowed to say in the news? I'm sure that's pretty realistic. So I think that, you know, we really, this is a big decision and it's gonna affect people. But we gotta look at the long-term effect of God forbid.
Right. And I don't think anybody's saying we wanna cancel the trips permanently because I, it is a great opportunity. My child did go to the Portugal and Spain trip this past, um, spring break and had a sensational time, was very safe, um, you know, for that whole entire week. And, you know, so I'm certainly not in favor of saying, hey, we're never gonna do trips again. We just need to really be careful and look at it. Um, because I, quite honestly, as I, we continued to send her, when, you know, I was looking at, am I getting something? And I, we did. In Amsterdam, like, that was my biggest concern. They had a long layover in Amsterdam, and that, and I'm like, Amsterdam, in my mind, is a hotspot of where something could happen.
I was thinking the same thing. I, I'm brand new at this, so you'll have to let me know how this, this go. What harm would there be? And please educate me if we just kinda tabled this, heard the presentation, could we come back?
Sure.
I don't know. I'm
We don't even need to have a vote. We can just kind of say, you know what, we're gonna table it and, you know, discuss it again and blah, 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 blah. You, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I, I would just like to hear the presentation.
It doesn't need to be something, a formal vote. We can just say, we're, you're going to put all travel on hold for the time being and look and revisit it again in six months.
At any, okay.
Or, or whatever. So, or, you know, we'll, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
It doesn't need to be a formal vote as to what, you know, that we need to do that.
Alan?
Has anyone been in touch with Congressman Jim's, Jim Heim's office? I believe he's on, like, the Security Council or something like that. I mean, I imagine, like, his staffers would, uh, you know, be pretty on top of what's safe and what's not safe.
Question is, what are they allowed to say?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you know the name? They're not gonna give anything more than what the news is already telling us.
But I could certainly reach out and see if they have any thoughts.
Maybe if we table it and if we do what you're, what you're saying and maybe listen to the presentation, also do our own, uh, kinda homework and checking to see, checking Heim's office, checking with National, even National, you know, just to kinda have more, more to go by.
Right. And this is certainly, like I said, not that, that we need to make a final decision or that we need to vote on anything. It could be something that we say, you know what, let's think about it. Let's look at different things. Let's check with Jim's, Jim Heim's office, and then we can, kind of, if we wanna move forward with it, revisit it again, next meeting or the meeting after.
I, I'd like, I, I feel a lot of that. I, I would just like to hear them out. I know they put a lot of work into it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
When would you have to have a decision about whether we go forward or not in order to have the trip move forward?
Well, I would say certainly by summer would be good.
Okay.
Okay.
Which, which would work good.
We, we would probably do make it, we would probably be able to make a decision before school, at the end of school.
Yes.
On, on that. All right. So let's move on with that. All right. So we'll have our discussion on our South Africa trip. And we'll add, Jim, John, can you ask, um, can you write down and put this on our next agenda?
Is there a discussion?
Uh, do we want it next, next, um, board meeting or do we wanna wait for, uh, for a month from now?
To vote on Africa?
Well, no, 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 no. I'm just saying to come back to another discussion on foreign travel.
We can do it next board meeting.
Want to do it next board meeting?
Yeah, two weeks is plenty.
All right. Perfect. Great. You are up.
Okay. Well, let me just say a few things by way of introduction. Um, the real terror that we ran into on the China trip, which ended about twenty-seven hours ago at Newark Airport, was a flight from Shanghai to Newark, which is of sufficient length that I advise students not to bring a book to read, but one to write because they would be spending a long time on the plane. It was a thirteen and a half hour flight. But that's what you pay as a price for going far away. And, uh, the benefit on the other side was being immersed in a culture that is a real experience, not the same thing as going to EPCOT and pretending that you're really in some foreign place. So today's a special day for the kids who were on all these trips because this is the day when they begin the journey. They've been on the trip. Now, they're going to take ten thousand fragments of memory and spend the rest of their lives trying to put them together. And every time they see a headline from one of these places, every time they see something in the news, uh, earthquake, a political change, it's going to matter more to them than it would have otherwise. I like to say that they come back, maybe not necessarily more mature, although I'm sure they are, but more awake than they were when they left in ways that we can't reach by staying here in Monroe. Um, and the discussion about safety is something that is, is always on my mind. Uh, China was the twenty-third country that I've taken students to. I've been doing this for more than a quarter of a century now. We always take safety into account. We're not going to plan trips to Libya or Tunisia or North Korea or Yemen or any place where there's strife and obvious war. We're not going to Syria. Uh, I'd love to have gone there once upon a time, but that's all changed. Um, and so, planning to go to a place like China, China was never really a soft target for any sort of terrorism. Um, nor is South Africa, which involves a single flight, another long one, going from the New York area to Johannesburg. Um, I know that it seems like the world is scary. But let me say this with several other history teachers in the room, and they're literally behind me, so I'll ask them to back me up and correct me if I'm wrong. If we're waiting for a year when things have settled down, we haven't had one since before the invention of farming. Maybe next year, everybody on earth will decide to quit being a jerk and terrorism will go away, but I don't think so. In my own experience, the difference between this decade and the decade when I first traveled outside the United States, which was nineteen seventies, this is far less scary than that was. We had organizations of terror then, too. The Palestinian Liberation Organization was very active. They were hijacking planes and bombing restaurants. The Irish Republican Army was busy, uh, not just in Ireland, but across Britain. So any teacher in the seventies, planning a trip to see Stratford-upon-Avon and London and maybe go up to Scotland, would've had to face that kind of scrutiny. The numbers tell us that this is a less scary time than most of those other times. The nineties, look at what was going on in the Balkans. The eighties, we had the Achille Laro incident. Uh, we had bombings at the airports in Vienna and Rome over Christmas in eighty-five. It's always been kind of scary. And I don't mean to seem heartless because I really do have skin in this game. I've got a seventeen-year-old daughter in high school who is going to Ireland in June. And if there's a bombing at the Dublin Airport, I'm gonna be looking harder at that, but I'm not going to cancel it because of that. If it looks like Ireland is slipping into civil war, no, she's not going on the trip. But that's the level of it. And it's, it's something I feel not only as a parent, but as a teacher, too. I know that if I keep her home because I'm afraid, I'm teaching her to be afraid. And whether you're a parent or a teacher or a school board member or an administrator, when a decision like this comes along, you're really a teacher. And you have to be careful in deciding what it is you want to teach. Do you want to teach kids to hunker in the bunker or to go out into the world?
I think what one, somebody had said is, parents have that opportunity to make that decision themselves to take on a trip. But, but I think what we're talking about
Again, we, we prescreen the places that we're going so that we're going to the safest places we can think of. And they don't always stay safe. Um, and I know John has heard this, but, uh, the company that Jamie and I work with, EF, um, tells a story about a trip that was planned in twenty-eleven. Um, they were going to Egypt, this group. Everything was all set up. And with a month left to go, Egypt did slip into civil war. That was part of the Arab Spring. And Egypt was no longer a safe place to take people. By this point in the planning, a lot of money has already been spent. There are hotels that have deposits on them. Some of that can come back, not all of it. There are flights that have been purchased. Some of that can come back, not all of it. And so what the companies do, and I've worked with EF, with Explorica, there have been others, but they all have the same boilerplate language. When these things happen, what they try to do is reroute a trip to a safer place. So in this event in twenty-eleven, they rerouted them on a tour to Tokyo, Osaka and Kyoto, sort of the same trip that I took kids on in twenty-thirteen. And then, two weeks before they were to take this trip, the earthquake and tsunami struck and the power plant at Fukushima went down. And Japan was no longer a perfectly safe place to go. It probably was safe, but it was too soon to know that. And so caution being the better part of wisdom, they decided to reroute them again. And they wound up going to France, had a wonderful tour. It was a great, uh, season for them. But that's the kind of flexibility that the companies have developed and that we take as a matter of course. South Africa has been very stable for the past twenty-two years. That could change. If it does, it's not gonna be a place that I'm gonna wanna take any students. I'd like them to go with me to places where headlines have been made, but I don't want them to be a headline. I don't wanna have anything coming back here that says Connecticut students. No, no. That's my nightmare as well as yours. So the trip to South Africa, I won't read back to you all of the details of it. We're going to see not just a different country, um, not just a different continent, although Africa is, is huge. We're going to see a different time of year. It's going to be the autumn in April when we get there. And there will be deciduous trees, losing leaves. From a standpoint of student involvement, and students always notice things when they're on these tours that they can't always articulate right away, but they, they work out the, the solution to them and eventually can talk about them. Um, they're going to see a country that was hopelessly torn apart by racial strife twenty-five years ago and found a solution and worked its way out of it and helped itself to heal through talking. And that's a kind of model that I think can be valuable in their lives because this generation that we're raising up now is not gonna have the job of racial healing done for them completely by the time our generation gets through with it in the United States. There's still gonna be a lot of work to do. And I hope that by taking them there, I can show them a place where it has at least begun to work. Then there's also the Lion King aspect. We're going on a two-day safari in the Kruger National Park in eastern South Africa. It sounds like it's wild and remote. It's remote, but the quote-unquote tents that students would be staying in are air-conditioned and have proper, modern facilities and so forth. So they will be able to see wildlife in its natural habitat. I told them that if they're interested in going, on this part of it, they'll be the zoo. And the animals won't know that there's any zoo involved. They just see these buses going by, which have become so routine that the large animals in the national park accept them as benign, large creatures and don't try to attack them. Helpful to remember, but I've also told students that if they come on this one, they don't wanna try to get out of those buses without proper instruction from the guides. So we're going to Johannesburg and Kruger National Park and then flying because it's a bigger place than it seems. Flying from Johannesburg down to Cape Town, which is where the colony started more than four hundred years ago. It began as a place where ships passing on the spice trade would be able to restock and buy supplies and food and continue their journey. And there's a lot of the dark underbelly of South African history that's on display now. Robben Island, where Nelson Mandela was a prisoner for twenty-seven years, is now a tourist attraction. In my own memory, I remember stories from Robben Island and the occasional rare interview with Mandela when he was staying there. After his release in nineteen ninety-two, it was only a couple of years until a complete change in the government's apartheid policy had caused him to be elected president. And that's a kind of social and cultural revolution that's still going on there with some very positive effects. So that's the plan for April twenty-seventeen. And again, we're always looking at what the safety situation is. But at this point, um, South Africa doesn't seem to be raising men flags. Does anybody have questions?
Yeah.
All right. The dates on this, um, EF tours are, is wrong, on this sheet.
Okay.
I just want you to be aware of that.
Well, whatever it is, they, they will match up with the break dates, um, eventually agreed on by the board.
Well, I guess it's right.
No, this, this date, these dates are wrong.
Oh, those are the dates, right. The one on your, on your trip on the first page is wrong. It's what they're showing. That is the wrong dates.
Well, they don't try to cut, um, tickets or get hotel reservations until October and November.
Your dates are right. It's theirs.
Their, their dates are wrong. So this would take the whole vacation week.
Right, right.
And students would be back on the eighteenth. We do have the seventeenth off as a teacher day, so.
And of course, um, with, with trips like this, uh, we always have the understanding that we can request a date and it may or may not be possible for the tour company to meet that request. Typically, they ask for a window, and I tell them two days, one way or the other. The length of the trip would not be different, but the beginning or ending date might. In twenty-twelve, we had a trip that went two days into the week after break when, when we went to Portugal and Spain. And Ms. Sherry was on that trip as an advisor also.
And this last trip, you only had three students from Massey, so you hooked up with another. Would that be the same thing here?
I'm sorry?
Would that be the same if you didn't have twenty students?
Well, if we have a small group of students from here, naturally, we are joined up with groups from other schools.
What's the, um, the actual interest now? How many students do you have from Massey that are interested?
I have one sign up. And this was done with the understanding and a letter from EF Educational Tours that in the event that the board denied the trip, uh, the money would be returned to the student.
So we have one right now from Massey?
It, it's fairly early. I, I usually don't get many before the first of June.
And my only second question is, is this a full guided tour?
Yes.
The day you arrive to the day?
Right. Uh, we are met at the airport by our tour director, who is a native of the place, knows everybody, knows the places, and takes us all the days of the tour, all the way until he or she delivers us back to the airport in Cape Town to come home. And all along the way, we have, um, individual city guides and, in this case, uh, nature guides in Kruger National Park. And those are, those are separate. But we have our tour director, who is also the field liaison with EF with us twenty-four seven.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Alan?
Some of these, um, places you're gonna stay at, like, what's the, um, like Johannesburg, like, what's it like there at night?
Well, I have not been to South Africa.
Okay. No, I mean, I'm assuming you looked into it.
The, the, the way that EF chooses its hotels is with an eye toward fifty years of experience. Okay, they started in sixty-five, so fifty-one now, with American teenagers and knowing what they might try to do. And so they try to choose hotels in places and neighborhoods that are going to be accommodating to us. We were aware when we were in Beijing, we were in a hotel in the southeast corner of the city, about ten minutes away from the city center. It was walled in. It was kind of a compound. And I went on walks every morning on this trip, and so I got to see some of the other neighborhoods. I'd say they looked a little seedy, but not really threatening. But EF chose this place because it had adequate security and it had a guard and a gate and it closed every night. And not all the hotels that we were at belonged to neighborhoods like that, but when they do, EF is always thinking about the security of its people. So, we, we've always felt that we were taken care of when we went out.
So, the kids wouldn't be allowed to go out? I mean, you wouldn't do anything at night?
If that's part of the plan, yes. And if the tour director has signed off on it, yes. And if the kids are operating in groups, no singletons. This is one reason why I, I have never taken a tour that stayed in one place. And I was offered, that this happened nine years ago. We were planning a tour to Amsterdam, Paris and London. Apparently, not enough people were interested nationwide, so there was no tour that this company could offer. I only had fifteen students and that's not enough. So, they, they said, look, we, we can give you some other possibilities. They said, how about option A, a week in Paris, option B, a week in London, or option C, a week in the Alps? And I said, option C. Then the rep said, don't you want to talk to your people? I said, no, because I don't want to take students for a week, any particular, single place where they will begin to feel that they are at home and act like they are at home and go out at midnight for a pizza, when really, they might not know the neighborhood well at all. And that's, that's just part of the built-in worry work in me. I, I may look pretty cool, but when I'm taking kids eight thousand miles away, as I did last week, I'm always thinking about these things.
What's the ratio, what would the ratio be for adults per student?
Well, the, the most extreme ratio would be six to one. Another teacher and I took the three students to China this last week, and so, we each had supervision of one and a half students. From a standpoint of a teacher being on tour with kids, it was a breeze. We had forty-two on a trip to Italy two years ago, and I had six adults on that one. Other than myself.
Anybody have other questions?
And what's the tie-in to the curriculum?
Well, you know, I've thought about making curriculum for these trips, but once you get started on it, and I'm sure that Jamie could back me up on this, once you get started on it, it has a sort of momentum of its own. The other thing is, I take students from all across the school, not all of whom are students of mine personally. So, what we're offering is an experience that is not a vacation, it's an educational tour. Is there a curricular tie-in? There are many, many, many curricular tie-ins. Not all of them are entirely predictable. I'll give you an example at point. Three years ago, on a trip to Japan, I had two students who had traveled with me twice before. Both were seniors. And they asked if they could go together to a site that they wanted to see that the rest of us were not interested in. Well, what is it, I said? Tokyo Disney, they said. I thought about it, and I was at first skeptical because it's Disneyland, but then I thought, okay, okay. I also have to consider the psychology of these kids, and they were both very reliable and I'd traveled with them before, so I knew they were safe. I talked to our tour leader, who said, all they do is get on this train and it takes them out there. I let them go. They went. They came back, and the first thing they reported was that on roller coasters, the Japanese do not scream. And they don't raise their hands. And they were, that's where they started, and they, they went on talking about the psychology of people visiting an amusement park in Japan. If I had tried to write a lesson that good, I don't think I could have. And the effect of it was that these two will, will take for the rest of their lives this image of the dutifully enjoying Japanese national riding a roller coaster, perhaps grimacing because he wants to scream, but it's not really socially acceptable. And it was an education. Cuisine also plays a big part, as you may imagine. Not so much in Europe, because we're accustomed to European cuisine, even here in Connecticut, but to take them to China, where nowhere can you get American-style Chinese food with its high sucrose content and bright colors. It's, it's all essentially homegrown and what we would consider a dim sum menu. Fish for breakfast? Why not? I'll be spending this week getting used to having breakfasts without green vegetables for the first time in more than a week. So, it, it has many, many layers. Everywhere we go, we, we are studying history, we're studying geology. We're looking at plate tectonics and why these mountains look the way they do. I think it's a rich blend. The miracle really is that students want to spend their break week learning twenty-four seven instead of staying home and watching Netflix until five. So, I've been, I've been very happy to lead the tours. Maybe I have even an advantage over my non-tour colleagues, because they will have spent a week not around teenagers, and I'm still acclimated to them.
Great, thank you. Anybody else want to?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks. Alright, we will move on to item E, which is policies first review. We have three policies that we're going to be looking at for the first time. It's policy fifty-one thirty-one, student conduct, policy sixty-one forty-six, instruction, and policy ninety-three twenty, bylaws of, bylaws of the board. George, do you want to touch upon these and what changes and anything?
Yeah, the first one, fifty-one thirty-one, just a minor change to the opening, that's more direct language. The second one, sixty-one forty-six, clarifies the graduation requirements for both twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen. Twenty-eighteen being the year when the, the increase in total credits kicks in. And then, the last one, just a one-line change. And that is a change to reflect what's happened with the board on occasion, where people do need to join a meeting by electronic device, by phone. That's it.
Alright. Does anybody have any questions on these? They're pretty, they're pretty minor. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not sure if like this is the change, but for like this requirement in terms of like drug awareness education, fifteen hours a year, that's not currently in place, right? Because like we didn't have like each year.
Science and freshman year and health.
So, like where is it coming in for like senior drug awareness, junior drug awareness, that stuff?
Those are the activities that you have for advisory. So, any of those kind of activities that you have, the yellow dresses? Form underage drinking, all those things come into play there?
Yeah, that's all incorporated in that number. So, didn't you just say before break you had something coming?
The juniors did. They had the texting and driving. That's the only trouble.
That falls under that whole area. The freshmen have the, the negative, yeah. So, that all is what encompasses that fifteen hours per year. Alright, we will have that as a second review next time. So, I have a motion to adjourn, because this is probably the latest reading.
I wanted to bring something up, and I didn't know when the right time was to do it, so I'm just gonna do it now.
Absolutely.
You know, with everything going on, on the news about the presidential race and how contentious it is between all the candidates and everything. And something was brought up on the news, I just remembered also, in, in another school district, in another state, about a student giving their opinion about a candidate and why they thought this person should win. And the teacher had said to that person something that the teacher shouldn't have said. It's different when a teacher reflects to a student what their personal choice is gonna be, if they choose to, but not to tell the student they're wrong for choosing that person. And I just want to make sure that our administrators and our faculty here, hopefully, will not do that. Because, you know, we, that's not what they're there for. And at least in my opinion. And I'm, I'm saying this not as a, you know, for the whole Board of Ed here. I'm saying this for myself, that I know if my kid said something that I'm choosing Joe Schmo and the teacher said, well, I think you're wrong for doing that, I would have a problem with that teacher. That's, that your personal opinion is not what's right or wrong in this matter. You can, you can have open discussions about what students want and why, but don't tell them they're right or wrong. And I just hope that none of our teachers in any of our schools are doing that. And I just wanted to bring that up, because it was something on the news as well. So, thank you. And yes, so moved for adjournments.
Second, thanks, all in favor? I'm sorry, this was like the longest one we've had.